Number one, approval of the agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor of approving the agenda as we have it? Aye.
Aye.
Likewise. Invocation, Mr. Smith.
If you'll all bow. Father, we come to you this evening humbled and in praise. We thank you for the blessings you have bestowed upon Fairfield County and its people, and we ask that you continue to bless us. We thank you, Father, for the fighting and giving their all to protect us and our freedoms. We ask that you look over and keep them safe. We ask, Father, that you look over and keep safe the people of Fairfield County. And now, we ask that you guide our meeting, Father, that any words we may speak or actions we may take are pleasing to you. Father, we ask that you help us see beyond our differences and beyond any interests that are not in the best interest of all of Fairfield County and all of its citizens. We thank you again, Father, for all you have done for our nation, our county, and our state, and we ask again that you continue to bless them. Amen.
Okay, approval of minutes, the work session on January 21 and the regular meeting on January 26.
So moves, Madam Chair.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor to approve? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Just as a point, that we're going to introduce now our new sheriff.
He don't need no introduction.
And at this time, he will say his words of wisdom to us and then introduce his senior staff.
I'd like to thank y'all for having us here today. Thank y'all so much for y'all to know us as well. Congratulations to the new chairman and welcome. That's all. Major Douglas?
I'm Brad Douglas. I oversee our investigations and our narcotics investigations, and I'm waiting to see what else the sheriff's gonna let me do. Anyway, I'm glad to be part of it. It's been great with this transition we've been in and just glad to still be here at Fairfield County Sheriff's Office.
Pat Luke. Name is Dustin Pettit. I'm captain of patrol and been with the sheriff's department for about 27 years and great pleasure to work under new sheriff, Will McGee. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name's Rachel Craig. I've been here with the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office for 25-plus years. I oversee civil process division. That includes SROs, the CLPs, warrant division, court security, that type of thing. So if y'all have any problems with civil process, give me a call.
Thank you.
Chief Rick Gibson, he was not able to make it tonight, but he's the new chief. He's the undersheriff. Very fortunate to have him and all these guys as well. And if y'all need anything, please call me, especially the good stuff, call me the bad stuff. Thank y'all.
I have a question. And first of all, I'd like to tell Mr. Douglas, thank you for the updates you're giving us. I greatly appreciate the one you just sent out about the lake and the break-in problems out there. And also, you might want to talk about your citizen program that's coming up. And are you going to continue checking on the seniors?
We're gonna do that. Citizens Academy, Brad, you wanna touch on that?
The Citizens Academy will continue. We set for March 31, I think? March 31. We've never got a bad complaint about there. I see Charles in here and Mr. Shaffer, several people are in here that have been part of it. The worst complaint we ever got is seats are uncomfortable. That just goes to, I think, the nature of what it means. Anyway, love to have y'all. Please, if you're interested in coming to it, please contact us. If you're not on Facebook, contact Sheriff's Office. We'll put you on this, what we call, I think Mr. Robinson was talking about, the citizens' advisory list. Anytime we experience any type of criminal trends, you know, anything we think that we need to interact with the public on, we'll put that information out there, let you know, you know, what type of trends are going on, or if we're looking for information. And we're partners in this with y'all. We want to communicate with you, and the best way to do it's through email or Facebook. You know, I don't do Facebook, so I would depend on the emails, but please do contact us. We'll add you to that list. We've got a very rapidly growing distribution list. We want to keep everybody up to speed on what's going on in the county. But again, do want to get another plug in for the Citizens Academy. Please, if you've got the time, I think it's very well worth your time to come out and be with us. But anybody who's been in, can you raise your hand in here? So if you haven't been in it, don't take it from me. Go find one of these folks from here and ask them about it, and I think you'd really enjoy it.
What, about six weeks?
It is six weeks. Yes, ma'am, it'll be once a week for two hours, and about six weeks long. We're debating on whether we need to add a seventh week, and the second biggest complaint we've gotten is not long enough. So again, we take that as a compliment.
Would also like to invite y'all to be part of that. Any of y'all would like to go on, please?
Okay, one more question. Your crime watch schools are still out in the communities, is that correct?
We've got two CLPs, that's community-oriented police officers, and they're doing community meetings. If anybody in here would like to start a community meeting in your community, feel free to give us a call. We'll help you get that started.
Okay. Any questions from any other council members?
Madame Chair, we'll address the Home Alone program too, please. I know a lot of folks have asked me about that, so...
The Home Alone program is, if you know anybody that is elderly or needs some assistance from Sheriff's Office, we'd be glad to do that, but we need to have them registered, so we'll have to check on them and let you check on them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to congratulate the sheriff on his election and all the folks who've been promoted. We certainly thank you for what you do each and every day.
Thank y'all so much for coming. Next, we have the public comment that has to do with something that's on the agenda. Ms. Brown?
Madam Chair, we have Mr. Lincoln Bright. He wants to speak on the retreat.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway.
Oh, stop this time a second. I just want to make sure that everybody remembers three minutes, please.
Glad to do the example.
Thank you.
Okay, Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. Since the retreat is on the agenda, it gives me an opportunity to continue my speech from last time, the one time I dated here to the time. As all you know, I do a lot of research in some areas of my speeches. I can find an infinite amount of writings extolling the imperative of informed citizen participation in democracy. Further, these books, documents, essays, speeches, et cetera, all maintain citizen attendance at public government meetings as a bedrock of connecting an informed citizenry to their government. I cannot find, however, any support for throwing roadblocks to limit citizen public meeting attendance. Rather, it is incumbent upon the government to facilitate maximum citizen meeting attendance. Simply put, government meetings are for the people in a democracy. Let Fairfield County councils stand with democracy and hold their public meetings in the county of the voters who elected them. I also have brought you a recent editorial found in the state scorating the county council for Richland County for holding a meeting outside the county. And I'm going to give you a copy of this. Some of the things that they say, please tell us what is in Richland Council or any other governing body that chooses to hold retreats or meetings out of town can get done out of town that can't get done in its home county. And it goes on. It's unacceptable. So unacceptable, council members should cancel plans to retreat to another county. And it's really a best argument, and it states it better than I can, hold the meeting where your people that voted you in can attend the meeting so that they can participate intelligently in the government. I've heard many times that council members talk, accurately so, that many citizens in our county are not as mobile as a lot of us are. They can't go out of county for a lot of things. So give them a chance to see their government in action and keep that government in action in Fairfield County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That was the example.
Mr. Jimmy Ray Douglas on the I-77 loan and budget process.
Daddy always told me to take care of your pennies and dollars to take care of yourself. County employees driving Fairfield County vehicles with XM satellite radio service should pay the Fairfield County taxpayers back for the use. There is no way to explain how service would be considered a need that would benefit the taxpayers only themselves. Vendor 3642 XM satellite service, year 2010, 64188, 2011, 6411, 2012, 64411, 2013, 64401, 2014, The handpicked facilities board by Fairfield County Administration and County Council is positively responsible for Fairfield County over time paying back a loan that represents close to $50 million being paid to justify not letting other counties in the state benefit from projected money to be received from REACT December 2 and 3 at V.C. Somme UTA plan. No amounts were ever discussed on the loan at any of the open council meetings at which the questions arose. Fairfield County paid parpa pole law firm the authors of the loan to explain what led up to the loan and the purpose of said debt the county would face. The attorney could not answer some of the questions Barbara Ball, publisher of The Voice, presented and said he would talk with her after the council meeting. When confronted after the meetings, he refused to talk to her. Instead of paying interest on the loans, insurance, and attorney fees, there are other ways Fairfield County could show a need for the fees in lieu of. Instead of enriching law firms and paying bond fees, what would be wrong with giving the town of Winsboro, the town of Ridgeway, and Jenkinsville money to improve their services? Fairfield County military rate for taxes could probably be lowered enough that the county as a whole could benefit. New businesses and industry would come in, produce new jobs, and workers would want to work and live in Fairfield County because of low taxes. A larger workforce would increase the student population in our city, which could possibly justify receiving a portion of the funds from V.C. Somme also. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of Council Mayor Greg Ginyard signed to speak, but he is now waiving his comments because he says he would yield to listen to what the administrator has to say under the old business on the agenda. So now we have Mr. Dean Melton. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Melton, you were moved to segment number two also. That ends segment number one.
Okay, next, we have no public hearing, ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Would you read what's down to first reading, please, Assistant?
First reading by title only, ordinance number 648, authorizing an amendment to the master agreement governing the I-77 corridor, regional industrial park by and between Richland County, South Carolina and Fairfield County, South Carolina, to expand the boundaries of the park to include certain real property located in Richland County, 3130 Bluff Road LLC, and other related matters.
For council information, this is just another company coming online in Richland County that would be part of our agreement with them, and from that, we receive a portion of their tax revenue each year. Nondebatable. Do I have a motion? So moves.
Second.
Okay, all in favor to approve ordinance 648? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, we have no boards in commission minutes, and we have a request in front of us for an appointment to the Aeronautics Commission.
Madam Chair, move that Mr. Dennis Brandon be appointed to the Aeronautics Commission.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Madam Chair, just like to say, Mr. Brandon is a gentleman from District Seven, and I am wanting to get him on the Aeronautics Commission. He is a business owner, started a multimillion-dollar business in his home in Fairfield County, and he is actually currently in the process of getting his pilot's license through our airport. My understanding is that when he does that, he'll be one of two properly licensed pilots in Fairfield County, so I think this Aeronautics Commission is certainly a good fit. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, next, in front of us, before us is county council bylaws. We had before us last time dividing up public affairs and policy, et cetera, and Mr. Smith had made some recommendations. I went back and looked at it, and I discussed it with him, and he said he wouldn't have heartburn over this. But the first, I'd like it to be called Public Affairs and Policy, and that would be three different committees that we had had years ago that would all have to do with setting policy. And that would be Justice and Personnel Procedures, Environmental and Public Safety, and then Land Planning and Zoning. All of those are policies. And then the third, a second one, I would like it to be Public Resources and Development, which would be Health, Education, and Recreation, Public Facilities and Transportation, and then Welfare and Community Relations, and taking out the land planning that's there. Any discussion on this proposal?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would, I have no problem with it. As I suggested to you before the meeting, council, let's try it for six months. If we see it's not working, we come back to the table to make changes if we need to.
Number one, to get this actually started, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this proposal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and then you would want an amendment for six months?
Six months to come back and take a look, and let's see how effective it has been.
Okay, you'll have a second to the amendment.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, so you have yet to appoint anyone to these boards or commissions?
Right, because we don't literally have them in place just yet. Okay, all in favor of the amendment to try this process for the minimum of six months and then readdress it? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, then the motion is to accept this presentation for dividing that into two committees and changing it so that it is policy and also services. With the amendment now of six months, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, then that's the way we will divide the committees, and we will have those appointments at the next council meeting. Were there any other, we have not fully now adopted the rules and bylaws as presented. We were going to do that finally tonight. Does anyone have any additional changes, recommendations to the bylaws and the rules of council? If not, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept them as stated.
A second, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose likewise. The next item is to write a letter to our congressional delegation. As a ruler, we usually have at least one representative that will go to Washington to the NACO Legislative Conference. This year, it works out that no one is able to attend. We always have three or four items that we would always discuss with that delegation when we arrive. Because we cannot, I'm sure there are going to be two or three things that still need to have their attention. So at this time, I'd just like us to make a list of things for a proposed letter to go to the congressional delegation in regard to our needs.
Madam Chair, just something I thought about this afternoon. Since we can't go to Washington, I know that Congressman Muldany comes to Winsboro, and I think that Senator Graham probably makes trips down, too, that maybe we could try to meet with them here, where we could present some of our topics with them. And one thing I've never liked about the Washington trip, it's, at the end of Washington's already planned their budget for the year. And if we could talk with them, say, this summer or in the spring or whatever, that way, they would have ideas for their budget planning for the next year in the fall. So if we could do that and maybe have Ms. Brown try to make some contacts, see if we could meet with them when they're local with us.
Right, good idea. This is, to my knowledge, the first time that they're going to have a legislative conference before March the first, which is their cutoff period for this year. So I think they're trying to work with us to get us there to do that sort of thing. But topics, Mr. Mascherio?
Yeah, I just want to comment, Madam Chair, what Ms. Kennedy said. I think when we had our first meeting for the beginning of the year, Senator Graham's secretary or staff person attended that meeting, and she spoke probably to each one of us individually, and said that we had those concerns to come to Rock Hill, and she would set up a meeting for us. And I think Ms. Kennedy's right, if we could meet with them prior to them even setting the budget and get our requests, it might focus a little bit more attention on our requests. And we could meet in Rock Hill, I think, with his staff there.
Okay. All right, topics. Do you have any suggestions, Mr. Poe?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, council. Good evening, citizens of Fairfield. Madam Chair, from some of the issues that we've been talking about for a while, individually and collectively with council members, I think we had suggested a top four. Those four, in no priority order, would be hospital funding, water and sewer infrastructure, inoperability, which deals with our communication systems and public safety, and also internet connectivity. Those were the ones that have seemed to have kind of been on the focus of most council members at one point or time. So those were the ones that staff would suggest that you consider.
Does anyone have any other items that they can think about that they would like on the list?
How about the library?
Okay.
Coming up with their building program, and Senator Graham has been very receptive to helping the library, and I'd love to have something in there with that.
Since you're on that board, or have been and met with them, you want to tell us about a proposal they're working on?
Yeah, they are, I'd be glad to. They are working on a proposal to put a library in Ridgeway with more hours, and Mr. Ruth, I'm sure you've heard, Ridgeway folks want more hours and they want more availability. So the fire department, once it moves, there's an old building that's not being used, and they're going to look at renovating that. And Senator Graham had given us $100,000 for computers two years ago, and we couldn't use them because the library here in town was not wired appropriately. Another old building that was built in 1976. And so we've done that wiring now, and they can use those computers now. But Mayor Herring is very interested to see if anything we can do to help with, it may not be brick and mortar money, but some others to furniture and that kind of thing. So I would love to add that to our list. And Ms. McMaster said she would certainly put together something for us to send to Washington. Okay.
Also, it's been discussed that they may be looking at a possible USDA grant, and that is something that the congressman and senators handle, and they can make good comments for those folks. Okay, Mr. Mascherio?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to add housing. We have one of the poorest stocks of housing in the county or in the state, and we have thousands and thousands of people working at the nuclear power plant. We have folks that come here to work for our schools. I don't know if they're required to actually be a resident of Fairfield County if they work here, but is there a way that we need to focus where we can entice or invite developers to come with some kind of incentives to start building some homes or houses, be it low to modern, whatever, to increase our population and our tax base? Because most people don't, they just live in Newbury and other places. We might be able to capture that population and increase our tax base. And we don't seem to focus on housing. We have some very poor housing conditions in Fairfield County, which that we would give some consideration to that.
Anything else? If not, do I hear a motion to include hospital funding, water and sewer, inoperability of 911 communications, internet connectivity, library, and housing?
Two more. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
Madam Chair, just coming from one to three, four, five, six things. Out of those six things, we probably need to consider if you want to really prioritize out of the six things, what would be the three most crucial things on that list? Because a lot of times, you go there with a handbasket full of ideas, you really don't get what you want. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there. We need to prioritize out of that six or seven things, what would be the three most urgent things that we think the county would need.
Okay. I was going to say, why don't we get Mr. Poe to draft a proposed letter and send it to us about, and the comments that would go with each one, and then we give you our choices? Would that work? Is that okay with council? Because he has the bulk of the information that would go with each item at this time. Okay, the next is the county council, planning retreat, training retreat, February the 21st, 9:00 to 4:30, and it's going to be at the Midland Technical Campus, Farrell Road.
Read that one time, Madam Chair.
Okay, February 21, 9:00 a.m. to 4:30, at the Midlands Technical Campus at Farrell Road. We're using that facility because we put money in the pot for educating the children and everything, and it's something that's available to us, and so that's where we've chosen to have it. And I think you've been asked to put down topics that you would like discussed at that, and Mr. Poe's been receiving those to add to the list. All right, next is...
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to say, I'd asked everyone to send that information in. A lot of people did by last Wednesday. So we've put together kind of a composite list, and after staff, we get back with the chair, we'll actually send that list back out and have a final say to approve the agenda. Just one other thing is, and not to reopen everything, but the meeting that we have, it is a public meeting.
That's correct.
We advertise for that, so just wanted, just, Madam Chair, thank you.
In a very relaxed setting, kind of thing. All right, next is the Jenkinsville Sidewalk Project.
Madam Chair, we met at the Midland Technical College shortly after we had the meeting with the hospital last week, the week before. I don't have the exact date down. And there was a recommendation that was made... And there was a recommendation that was made, and I think each one of the council members have that recommendation for them.
That's correct.
And the last paragraph I read, if you want me to read the whole thing, I can. Yeah, if the administrator said we had the motion, if you would post this for us, Mr. Pope?
Yes, sir. Madam Chair and council members, this was actually, the committee had met, the committee had a forum, there were some other council members that participated in that meeting. And this was the recommendation that was forwarded on, and I believe it was unanimous, if I remember correctly. But the Policy and Development Committee met immediately following the hospital meeting, and Chairman Marcharia opened the meeting along with Councilmember Ruth and Smith. I wasn't one of you. I know somebody must have. Councilmember Marcharia gave an overview of the request, and Councilmember Smith asked the mayor of Jenkinsville several questions about the request. The committee was concerned about the financial impact of the request in any potential precedent setting that may take place if they gave a favorable recommendation to the request. The administrator responded to both questions, to both concerns, and the committee agreed to support the request of the town for sidewalk completion by using $25,000 from the county's appropriation of C funds in District Four in years 2015 and 2016. However, this is contingent upon support of the County Transportation Committee, or the CTC, supporting the project as well as the town agreeing to all prospective maintenance of sidewalks and the associated grass cutting. And that was the discussion that was held, and actually the recommendation that was forwarded on to the full council tonight for consideration.
And Madam Chair, we did have a meeting with the CTC, and I would like to actually amend this motion. I'd move to approve $25,000 from the county's general fund budget over the next two budget cycles for a total of $50,000 for the sidewalk project requested by the town of Jenkinsville, contingent upon the CTC matching the $50,000. This is a substitute motion that I would like to make.
I second that, Madam Chair.
All right. Six out of seven of us attended the CTC committee last Tuesday night. And they didn't have a quorum present. However, it appeared at that time, their discussion was that if we did it the initial way that it had been presented, then they would be funding all of the money out of CTC funds, regardless of what our thoughts were, et cetera. And therefore, I think that's probably why Mr. Marcharia has a contingent motion before us. Is that correct, Mr. Marcharia?
That's absolutely correct, Madam Chair.
Any discussion on his motion? Smith?
Just like to speak in opposition to the motion. I just don't feel comfortable with us doing this. I think it sets too much of a precedent across the county. I think if we do this in one location, that we're going to get requests from locations all across the county. And unfortunately, and I just don't see us doing that. Another thing, this comes in, I know that the mayor mentioned to us that this letter of support, of course, is due in March. I also don't feel comfortable with us appropriating funds from a future budget when we have not had budget work sessions, budget discussions yet, and I think that should be done during the budget process. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
Additional comments?
Madam Chair, Mr. Pope, you and I had talked about the, maybe some regulations from the State Highway Department as to what that money can be used for. I think you alluded to the fact in other counties, they do use it for sidewalks and other issues. Did you, were you able to get any information on that?
Madam Chair, Ms. Kinley, clearly the C fund monies can be used for road paving, resurfacing, sidewalks, those types of infrastructure projects. As a matter of fact, I think here in the county, funds have been used for those types of projects before. I think one of the things that, of course, that we have as further information is actually the county's ordinance itself that outlines those things. And I think the county's ordinance pretty much kind of mirrors, counties do, maybe they have some different nuances what they do, but clearly the money can be used for that. I think what, at least in my professional opinion, what it boils down to is actually a practice of what the monies have been used for historically. And that's why, and I think, I believe I sent it to you, one of the correspondences that I've had from a staff member at the CTC was saying that I think that our council needs to, at some point, meet with the CTC to go over the policy again, to talk about priorities within the county. This county, of course, is growing, is changing, and just because of things that we've done in the past, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to do them in that same way in the future. So clearly they can be used for that. I think we need to have a joint discussion about that. And to be candid, and this is just my opinion, but I believe that the portion of monies that is allotted to the county from the gas tax monies, I believe that this council, by majority vote, of course, has some weight and leverage as to what the priorities of the county, what the county, what those priorities are. So I would like to see us actually prospectively kind of meet with them and kind of talk about those things. However, I think Councilmember Marcharia, his substitute motion is actually suggesting that the funds, or our portion of the funds for this sidewalk project, actually come from general fund dollars and allow the CTC or give them the opportunity to be able to match those. And so I think that's what the, I think that's what his substitute motion is. And originally, and just to make sure everyone's clear, on the original discussion that we had on this situation, when the mayor had actually brought this to our attention, there wasn't necessarily a desire to take the monies out of the general fund at that time. And pretty much the only avenue that we had at that time was to be able to take the money out of the C fund allocation that we get. And I think that was a thing under consideration, of where we were just going to use funds out of District Four over the next two cycles to fund the $50,000. But since that seemed to be so confusing, or however that got discussed in that manner, this would be another way, of course, if this council saw fit, to be able to, at least to cover the county's portion. But keep in mind, still, that other $50,000 of that has to be secured as well, and I think under the grant, under the grant terms.
So after the motion that was made with the committee, there's nothing wrong with it? Correct?
Let me make sure I understand your question. Are you talking about the CTC or?
This. We have every right to use that money for sidewalks, correct?
Yes.
Like you said here. So, Mr. Marcharia's motion is to take it out of the budget.
That's correct.
But if this is correct, why do we need to take it out of our budget, Mr. Marcharia?
We're asking for, they're asking for matching funds, not take all of the $50,000 or $100,000 out of our budget, because they do get funds.
Right.
And what we're asking them, out of special projects they have had over the years, the last 10 years, we've never had a problem with the C funds, with CTC doing special projects when we're asked. Council have even put money into some of these projects, it's not the president that we're sitting. We've even helped them buy, purchase a machine to help fix roads, if you remember. I forget exactly what to call that machine, the patching machine. So this is not unique in terms of the council providing money to help the CTC with special projects.
But they did not say no to us, right? They only had three people there to vote. And I would like to see it stay like it is until we meet with them Tuesday and give them the information that Mr. Pope has given us, and see if we can't get them, because one of them did say, the chairman did go back and say, "Well, there's nothing wrong with us looking at some other varied projects." And I just didn't feel like, you know, they would say no. I would like to see us stick with this motion until after that meeting tomorrow night with them.
Well, my, if I may, Madam Chair, my understanding was, from Mr. Williams, this was contingency upon the council. They wanted to wait till we meet tonight, and whatever we decide, they are scheduled to meet tomorrow night to support either up or down what we do tonight. So if we voted tonight under contingency to match those funds, as my understanding, then they would support the project. Do you understand that differently? Because they kind of put that in writing to some degree.
Right, but I don't have a problem with what this says, and that we, the committee voted on. And I just would like to leave it as it is, that they know we are going to take $50,000 out of the CTC, money which we have a right to do.
Okay, if I may, just one, Madam Chair. Are you saying that you want them to foot the total bill?
Well, if they look at it that way, I don't look at it. This is gas tax money that our citizens have paid. And I think whether it comes out of their pocket or ours, it's due to the citizens of Fairfield County. And I think we ought to, until we get a no from them, I say stick with what we've got here. And like Mr. Smith said, don't touch our budget yet, we haven't gotten into that. But I'm looking at this as going to be a positive. And I think with Mr. Pope, if he can meet with us tomorrow night too, to let them know that it's been done before and in other counties, we're not asking for anything wrongly to be done.
Positive contingency upon we do the matching.
But we're going to do, didn't y'all vote? The committee said you were going to vote to do the matching, right?
Right, Smith?
Madam Chair, I would just like to say, I certainly agree with Ms. Kinley. We also have another meeting before March, if I'm not mistaken. So depending upon what the CTC decides tomorrow night, we still have an opportunity to meet on this and to, you know, if we need to, to take that money from the general fund budget. But I certainly would like to see the CTC meet with at least a quorum. Again, they had three members, I think, out of seven or eight the other night. Really, in my opinion, didn't even have a quorum to meet, certainly take votes. So I would like for us, maybe if Mr. Pope could, or someone could, to put together just a little packet of information on what we have worked with them together in the past on, so that they see there is that relationship there. Of course, Ms. Kinley, I would like to point out that the reason if they will not be amenable to doing that total amount, that Mr. Marcharia would need to make this other motion is because at the end of the day, C fund monies are at the discretion of the CTC. So, however, again, we've worked with them in the past. I think it's a positive that they have reached out and said we would like to look into our relationship with the council and see what we can do to be able to work together in the future. But I certainly think we would hastily be appropriating $50,000 from the two future general fund portions of the budget if we do this before the meeting tomorrow night. So again, I would just urge a no vote on this motion that has already been placed on the table unless anyone would like to retract that motion. However, I think this is the way that we should do this.
Mr. Ruth?
I was going to say, there were only three committee members at that meeting, and however many of their seven are reading, they didn't have a quorum. So we don't know how the rest of them feel about it. I would really love to see this project completed, I really would. I do have a little bit of concern about taking out a general fund in the county and setting a precedent down the road. And I know they said it's been done in the future, but that concerns me. And I've made a call to a couple of people as another possible source of trying to get this money, because I would like to see it completed. And I, but I'm not through with that. I think I asked Mr. Pope, is there, this is another option, is there any possibility of taking any of the recreation money out of, in the future, out of District Four money in lieu of that?
What have you been drinking, Mr. Ruth?
I mean, we're talking about taking road paving money out. That was what this was.
If I may, Madam Chair, that's totally inconsistent. At no time have the CTC have done a special project where they've reached into any council district and taken away their paving money in order to have a special project. That's a total separate thing with the CTC. When they do a special project from the state, it has nothing to do with the paving money whatsoever. And the recreation monies, bond monies for recreation, not for sidewalk or paving or anything of that nature.
Well, you know, it's in the recreation area, isn't that correct?
Not exactly, no.
I was under pressure, it was.
Madam Chair? I think if I'm interpreting correctly what Mr. Ruth is asking about, keep in mind, away from the sidewalk proper project itself, we do actually have a new county facility that's going to come online within, well, not come online, but actually be under construction within the next year, that's actually between the park and where the sidewalk ends right now. We're going to have, and actually it's under design now, for the split station that we've talked about, which is actually a fire station and an EMS station. Right there, it's actually right before you get to the recreation site on the hill there, on that 215. So I believe, Mr. Ruth, that's why he's asking that question. However, that footprint itself deals with the building and the infrastructure on that footprint, not anything else associated. And I've mentioned to, I think, all of you who've inquired about this, and I think I've spoken to every council member individually about this particular project. But to me, if you kind of cut away everything else, it makes sense about the sidewalk project, and this is just my professional recommendation to you, because we do actually have a county facility that's going there right on 215 in and of itself. So, I mean, you know, there, I mean, that's in between actually going to the town and the recreation park. But that infrastructure would be wedded in the bond to the project itself.
Madam Chair. And let me apologize to Mr. Ruth, that was a little strong language.
I want to go off of you somewhere.
When you mentioned the recreation thing, the recreation thing we're talking about is like, for like, three or four miles from that particular spot up on Lads Road. You know, and it's quite a distance from there, yes, sir.
Okay, one thing, also, whenever we put the project in with the fire department and the EMS, which is going to cross over the sidewalk, there would have to be engineering done to allow for that sidewalk not having to go into that section. So you round off the ends for our driveway to go in. There's probably going to be two driveways in there. So hopefully that can save the project some money as well in that process. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Marcharia, would you just consider until after tomorrow night, taking your motion off the floor, and let's see how we come out tomorrow night? Because it sounds like you got your support for the council to get this project done.
For the council's sake, I can withdraw my motion, and Mr. Trap withdraws second. But let me say this from, that they didn't have a quorum there. Mr. Williams said, the way they're structured, they didn't have to have a quorum there. Well, I'm telling you what he said. He can pull them on the phone, and I said by proxy or whatnot, and he had some comments about it. But let me just say this and get it off my chest. In that discussion of why I don't think it's going to happen, because Mr. Smith was very arrogant, very disrespectful. And he told me after I was invited to speak, because I went there, the mayor asked me to come. And they asked me to speak, when I spoke, he told me, "Next time I open up, I better be on the agenda." That's what he said, and pointed his finger at me. And before I left, and before I left, and before I left, he told me, he told me, "What you need to do is get up out here and get on down the road and go home. I'm not his slave, I'm not his child, he can't raise me no more, and he's not going to talk to me like that." And we had six council members in there that let him disrespect me. Didn't say a word to him about protocol and whatnot. And that's not the way we treat one another in the public meetings like that. And I will not be talked to like that. So that's why, when you want me to withdraw it, I am not optimistic with that attitude and arrogance that he has. And this is not the first time. But I'll do it to see where we go, and I will bring the motion back up again. But I do not feel as though we will get any place with that kind of attitude, with that kind of so-called leadership.
Mr. Marcharia, you mentioned Mr. Smith. That was Mr. Williams.
I apologize, Mr. Smith. I saw your finger go up, and I said, "Oops." I'm not from Texas either, so. And I apologize for Mr. Williams just saying that.
You and Mr. Ruth sharing over there.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
He's a good man.
I'm okay.
You're okay now. This end wants you to get your act together down there. Okay, so you've- Okay, so you're gonna withdraw your motion? Okay, Mr. Trapp?
I withdraw in a second, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And continues upon the meeting tomorrow night with the CTC. The recommendation we initially had with them from the committee.
Okay. All right, does everybody understand from the printout that you have in front of you, what the motion is still to go forward, to be presented to them tomorrow night? Okay, all in favor of the motion as it?
If we could, if Mr. Pope has time between now and then, if we could, again, put together a list of things we have worked on in the past with the CTC to accompany this, I don't think I need to make an amendment to the motion in that regard. However, if you have time to do that, I think that would be a good thing to show them, we worked together in the past, there's no reason we can't do that now and move forward in the future. Thank you.
We'll have that, we'll have that for you. And like I said, you're exactly right, we actually worked on a project where they asked us to split 50, 50 of them last year, just last 20.
Okay, Mr. Marshall Rhea, you make the motion now as it came out of committee?
Yes.
You'll have a second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Oppose likewise. We will have an answer for you by March 1st.
Madam Chair, before we leave this section, can I go back to the retreat and with Mr. Bright's comments? And it's good to have people in our audience out here, but I just wonder, would you consider doing it at Midlands Tech in Fairfield? The retreat, and maybe?
We only have one room available to us there.
Right, of the meeting room?
Yeah, we need two rooms.
Okay.
So.
Just trying to accommodate.
We've tried to think of some possibilities, and we didn't come up with any, we didn't come up with any alternative places for the meeting. We actually looked at White Oak, and that was cost prohibitive, whereas this is free, because you pay for every person that walks through that door up there. And so, like I say, we looked at a couple of alternatives in the county.
One day, yes, thank you.
All right, no new business, county administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll be brief. The first thing is the local government fund, I think, you, all of the council members should, I guess you guys are being barraged by information from me and from the Association of Counties now about the local government fund. Of course, the local government fund is probably one of the most important funding sources for counties in the state. And of course, that has been pretty much under attack for the last 10 to 15 years. And of course, it's a very important resource for us. It seems as though that there's some legislation afoot now to address certain things, so we wanna make sure that everything, that the counties get our rightful portion as required by state law. And I think that's pretty much what we expect from the state of South Carolina. Of course, the Association of Counties is representing our interest in that, but we will keep you updated as that moves along.
Mr. Pope?
Yes, ma'am.
We're also working with our staff to look at that list of unfunded mandates, to see what the state actually sends us and what we physically pay every year, and see what that figure actually is for Fairfield. I know there's a report out there, but we're trying to look at it as it pertains to us.
Madam Chair, if I may just add, there are two currently bills in the House that have been filed addressing the local government fund. Local government fund, just so everyone knows, is money that we get sent from the state that really is for state services. That's your elections department, we have some delegation-type things, those are state services that the county carries out. And so in the past, we've kind of been on the hook for a lot of those, when they didn't pay for them all on their own. That's why we call them unfunded mandates. However, there are two bills in the House on this right now, one of those is H 3374, and that doesn't get the fund back to the currently mandated statutory level. It actually cuts the fund, removes a flexibility proviso, which means currently, if we don't get all the money that we're supposed to by statute from the state, we have a little bit of flexibility in things that we can do. This new bill would remove that flexibility proviso, and it also would only give local governments more money when the state's general fund increased by 4%. So their fund increases by 3.9%, that means they have a little bit more money to deal with inflation. However, if it doesn't hit that 4% mark, the counties don't get any of that extra money, and so we just have to deal with inflation on our own under that bill. Another one is H 3429, and that would return the local government fund over a three-year period, phase-in period, back to its currently, its current mandated statutory level. And I would like to just report that I know Representative Douglas has signed on as a sponsor of that bill, and if it makes it to the Senate, we certainly hope that Mr. Coleman will as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to comment on it and thank Mr. Smith for that information. But those of us who've been around quite a while, the local government fund has actually changed considerably over time. I know, I've been, I guess, associated with local government probably nearly the past 30 years. All of these monies actually came out of what used to be different taxes that local governments used to get monies from. Counties used to get probably 11 different checks that came in from the state of South Carolina. That was all consolidated, and most local governments worked on this together with counties and municipalities to create the local government fund, where actually local governments would receive 5% of the state's revenue, and of course, that was divvied up based on a population formula that went out to everyone. So those were the good old days when we had that. And that's been actually manipulated over time, and then it was changed to trust funds, and now it's evolved into what we have now. And, I mean, local governments have lost millions of dollars, and why that's so important to citizens is, actually, that's actually monies that you could use to defray, actually raising taxes to be able to fund services that you have. And I'm mighty afraid with some of the legislation that allows local governments to have these options to do other things with, one of those is gonna be where, of course, you increase fees and other things like that, which actually in and of itself is just an increase that actually the counties are gonna have to take responsibility for, instead of the state doing what it's supposed to do, and just fund the formula based upon the statutory requirement. That's plain and simple. All we want, you don't have to play these mathematical games with it in order to make us whole. So there'll be a lot of discussion about it, and like you said, thinking that, you know, if the state budget increased 4%, I mean, when has the CPI been 4%?
Another comment is, when we're doing this formula now to see how much is unfunded that we don't have, those are tax dollars that have to go to you in order to increase your taxes to pay these unfunded mandates. So that's something that's out of our control, unless we cut those services. That would be the only option.
Madam Chair, just the last thing that I have, and this is an administrative one, but just wanted to make you aware of it, and I'll electronically send this out to you. But this is dealing with a matter of, of course, we've had a refocusing, what's, council has asked us to do, a refocusing on codes enforcement in the unincorporated area of the county. And of course, this deals with how we handle cleanups in the county. And so we just wanted to make you aware of some of the administrative policies that we are amending. I'll send these out to you electronically to see if you have any concerns before I finally sign off on the document. But again, it's nothing that's required to be an ordinance or anything like this, these are administrative guidelines, but I certainly wanted you to be aware of those before you possibly would get a phone call about them, because there could be some changes that we feel as though that makes the system more efficient as it exists today. That completes my report, thank you.
Do you want to talk about B and C?
I want to say hi to Ms. B there. Actually, our county budgets from our county departments are due this week, so the good thing about that is we'll have some idea from information at our retreat. One of the things that we'll, of course, be handling different this time is, and I've already spoken to a lot of you individually about this, but staff will be requesting from council, budget direction on what type of budget that you want administrators to bring back. And so, based upon that, what your decision is, that's the way that I'll craft and customize our budget to present to you. And of course, as the law requires, it has to be a balanced budget. And so, once we get that direction, we will go back to our departments, because they will be submitting that stuff by the end of the week, and then we'll, of course, work out a budget plan for you based upon that direction. Thank you.
All right, Clark, report.
All right, second public comment. We have four individuals to speak tonight, starting with Ms. Beth Jenkins. She would like to speak on the matter of S 2 and a personnel matter.
Beth Jenkins, District 2. Chronological order, I'm pretty much addressing, and council will follow up.
Is the mic on? I can't hear.
The mic's not, I talk loud.
You're not talking loud.
Now you can hear me? Okay. Anyway, chronological order, February 10th of last year, almost a year ago, Mr. Pope announced that Goodwin Mills and Kaywood would be hired to go over all of S 2 projects, starting with Dry Park because of the fiasco mess that it was in. July 15th, many months later, I did FOIA and requested a list of the projects that were inspected by GMC, which is Goodwin Mills and Kaywood. Five months had passed. Final report, I was told, would be forthcoming. Very vague answer was given on the status of Dry Park. August 19th, almost another month later, I requested what forthcoming meant, because everybody has a different perception of what forthcoming is. Mr. Pope told me in a week. On August 20th, the following day, was when I got the email, that it would be next week. Today, which is six months after that week is up, we haven't heard anything about S 2. It's been a year since hiring GMC. I don't think it's been transparent. And through November, we have spent $40,097.50. That doesn't account any payments in December or January to this company for checking S 2 projects. And I think after a year, we should have some closure, have things finished up, and have a report for the public to read and see where we're going and how much money it actually cost us. I think the citizens and taxpayers should be updated. And the other issue I wanted to bring up was, there is an upcoming election, as everybody knows, for District 3, and there is a personnel matter, I think, about outstanding tuition. There is currently, my understanding, a payroll deduction for repayment of that tuition. Should the council member not be seated again? Is there anything in place such as a promissory note or an IOU to cover so that we, the county will be repaid the $20,000-plus dollars that is still due it? Rather than wait till after the fact? Should this not be in place right now? So I would hope maybe in executive session this evening, you discussed having something like that, because March 3rd is coming up rather quick. Once payroll deduction stops, if Mr. Trapp is not reelected, how are we gonna get our money? Thank you. Ms. Parker Goins, on Jenkinsville Water Company concerns.
We're presenting this before council, because all of you are eyes, eyes, ears, and heartbeat of Fairfield County. Am I about to air our dirty laundry in public? Yes. If this is the only way we can get it clean, then I consider this a good laundry day. We have a serious, long-term problem with the leadership of Jenkinsville Water Company that has escalated to out of control, misconduct and office disregard for bylaws that are covering and benefits of the members. Favoritism, buddyism, deception, lying, illegal voting, and blatant usurp of authority. When leaders focus more on what they want rather than the care and need of the people, they separate themselves from the people and sever the relationship, and people lose trust and confidence in those leaders. We are certain it is past time for a change of leadership in Western Fairfield. If we do as we've always done, we will be where we've always been. There's a season and time for everything. To be part of the win, we have to get in the game and become a team player. For Western Fairfield, we are not in the game and certainly do not have the representation we deserve to be a vital part of the team. The race is not given to the swift or to the strong. We need committed leaders to be in the game that are willing to hold out and hold on to what is good and right until the end. We are seeking for Jenkinsville Water Company, Western Fairfield, leaders with faith, compassion, good business skills, good communication skills, flexibility, courage, and very important, with a vision of wisdom enough to try to understand and share the vision that is in place for the county and Western Fairfield. We would like to invite the members of council to sit in with us at a more convenient time, knowing that you have a scheduled engagement, that we may move from stagnant to inclusive part of Fairfield County. We most appreciate if a resident representative could come at that time and share with the community the vision of the county. We thank you so much for allowing us to speak for the people. May the Lord God bless you, we will do that.
Mr. D. Melton, Community Center in Jenkinsville.
Good evening, council. Part of what Ms. Goins said led me to ask a question at a recent water board meeting in the town of Jenkinsville, and I asked the question about the new recreation center coming in. Does it have water promised to it? Is there water available for the recreation center? I was told by Chairman, Mr. Ginyard, Mayor of Jenkinsville, that no one had touched base with Jenkinsville whatsoever, in any size, shape, form, or fashion, about the availability of water for that particular recreation center coming in. That's all I have, because I'm just concerned, it seems like procurement of the land, you would know for a fact you have your water available and your sewer available, but from what my new understanding is, that there is no availability or no one's touched them about the availability for water. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Randy Bright, everything old is new again.
The title refers to some things that Ms. Jenkins spoke about, Randy Bright, District 1, sorry. Anyway, moving on, eliminating some redundancy with what Ms. Jenkins said, it gives me an opportunity to comment on, really, what I think is a fine idea of meeting with our local national and congressional representatives in-house here in the state, saves a lot of time, saves a lot of money, probably a more effective dialogue with them, doing it in-house. I would like for you to be able to receive input, and I can give mine later, to my district representative, from the citizens on what's on their mind, and what do they figure are priorities that we need to address with our national leaders. And a couple of things that come to mention that are not necessarily of the nature of getting grants or something like this. I understand that, and I think that's an important part of your meetings with them, but I think also that national movements and national legislation that directly impact our county and our state are important to discuss and convey our concerns. And I'm not gonna get into a debate about it now, but certainly there's a strong movement for a national sales tax collection, which would dramatically impact all counties across the nation. And also, particularly, which we've talked about before in these meetings, floodplain destinations, what's going on there? That's still kind of up in the air, from my understanding, and that impacts, of course, our watery and other locations throughout our county. So those are just a couple of other concerns that I have, and I'm sure there's plenty that other citizens have, so please be on the lookout for some of those inputs from the citizens, certainly myself, Dan, just to let you know. Some other questions on the Dry Park football field that I have, that just to piggyback upon Ms. Jenkins, is, are we ever going to recoup this $50,000 that we paid for some bogus drawings, as reported in all news medias, that were done by somebody that doesn't exist, supposedly? Will we be ever reimbursed for a project that's well over a year old now? Most projects, and if we didn't, we should have, had a timeframe, completion deadline, and penalties for not meeting those deadlines. and penalties for not meeting those deadlines. Also, what are the short and long-term solutions? As I pointed out in my last speech about Dotty Park in general, we've got erosion still, new erosion, on the new football field. What are we doing about that? Are we going to make sure that that is remediated in time before we wrap up this project? So there's a long way to go, and if you go out to that football field, it's still not near completed. And when will, have we pressed anybody for time?
I conclude segment number two. All the way down to county council time. Comments for the good of the county. Ms. Trapp.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. I wanted to address Ms. Jenkins. She has some questions. I want to go and ask them so she won't have any doubt. I think the first question was if I'm unseated in the next election, will, how will the county get the money for tuition reimbursement? Whether I'm elected or not, May the 4th, if I win, May the 4th, March the 4th, the county will give a note telling them to stop taking any money from my check regardless. So you want to know the date when I will continue paying? That'll be the first to never. You keep mentioning the citizen and taxpayers. All the citizen and taxpayer I seen come to that bike was white. I haven't seen any blacks come and complain about tuition reimbursement. Excuse me?
Is that a issue?
Yes, it is. This county is 6% black, in case you didn't know. So if they have a concern, surely they'll come up here and...
Madam Chair.
But surely, if 6% black population, they have a problem, they will come up here and let me know. The only problem is brought here is someone from Southern Fairfield. And next time one of you decides to go to Columbia College with my social security number, trying to get my personal information, make sure you take someone with color to the skin. They know what color I am down there. And I don't know how you get my social security number, but the next time you go down there, make sure you take someone of color to request information. That's all, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Let me go back and review everybody about the sheriff's drop-in.
It will be the 23rd of February, that's on a Monday evening, from 5:30 to 7:30. And we have moved, council, we have moved our time to 7 o'clock, but the governor's office is on schedule at 6:30 to do the program, and I really think we need to go back to 7:30 to move our meeting time instead of 7:00. And I would like to make that motion that we go to 7:30 for our meeting time so that we won't be rushed to leave that meeting.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Trapp.
I second.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair. Is that's on a Monday, is that correct?
Yeah.
Would you guys be amenable to maybe just rescinding that motion and moving the meeting until Tuesday, the following day, so that we're not in here till maybe 11 o'clock at night?
We will not be here until 11 o'clock.
Well, you know, and so that we could also attend that entire event instead of having to cut out early, I think it would be more respectful not to have to cut out that event early at all, but I just think it would be maybe a little bit easier to move that meeting to the next night.
Madam Chair, I think it ends at 7:00. Excuse me.
Mr. Ru.
I think, doesn't it end at 7:30?
Yes.
I would be in favor of meeting, still meeting at 7:30.
I just, Madam Chair, think that would make it maybe a little bit easier on the citizens instead of having to come out at 7:30. Maybe they enjoy dinner with their family. It's about 7:30 now, so.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to move the 23rd meeting to 7:30. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Marscharia.
Madam Chair, to move it to 7:30 or move it to a different date?
Okay, the motion on the floor right now is to the regular meeting on the 23rd, have it at 7:30.
I don't have a problem with having it on the same night.
But that's the motion on the floor with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of having the meeting on the 23rd at 7:30? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So it's approved, Madam Chair. I mean, no, Madam. She's chair.
Chairman, I have one more. I would love for the county to do a resolution for the sheriff, and Ms. Brown is wonderful at that and has a good way to put words together, and I would like to make that a motion that we do that on behalf of the county for Sheriff Young.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor of us presenting a resolution to the sheriff on the 23rd? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Anything further? Okay, anyone else for the good of the county?
Madam Chair, I do have something to say, and I'm throwing this out hopefully as information, feedbacks, I get cobwebs out of my mind. Mr. Trapp kind of woke something up in there. I'm wondering, you know, with this recreation and the opposition that we get from recreation, and I've been on this council for 15 years, and mostly the folks from Lake Watery and other places have always been opposed to recreation, any form of recreation in rural areas, everything in the town of Winsboro. For 15 years, I've never seen an African American come in here as an individual, as a group, and say, "We don't want recreation, don't put recreation in our community, in rural areas," whatnot. I've never seen that. It's always been opposed, people have needs, and I always wondered about that. I've always wondered about the fatherhood program. We have nut labs, if not in Fairfield County, all around Fairfield County. We have all kinds of drug buses in Fairfield County. We have all kinds of prescription drugs, and I think folks even work for this county might have been busted for having prescription drugs. We have domestic violence that goes on crazy across this county and all across the state. And in the father's mother program, I've never seen a white person. And you mean to tell me young white folks don't get into fights, don't get into drugs, of course, never send them to a program that hurts them the same way they do the young African Americans? I'm puzzled about that. I mean, you decide what it is. I'm just telling you what I see, and if you can show me that they participate, it must be a separate program going on in Fairfield County in some way, shape, or manner that I don't know nothing about, and I want you all to help me figure out what's going on since we putting tax money into this. And I know that people get arrested because I saw them get arrested for robbery, get arrested for drugs, and this, I never see them in the program. So something must be going on that I don't know. If we look at Lake Watery, and the folks are always complaining about recreation, I've taken people out there, and you must have 100, 200 miles of roads up there compared to maybe 50 miles in Western Fairfield. Roads up there smooth as a baby face, as smooth as a baby face, and you are down Ladd Road and all the other roads in the community to tear your car up. And the conversation came up the other night at the CTC, when they talked about Landis Road, that the state can't do nothing for them. Landis Road was in existence before Lake Watery became the community as it is, and can't get it paid, even praying to Jesus, you can't get it paid. And I'm just saying, what's going on in this county? Is it racist or not? I don't know. You tell me. Those are the facts that I know, and maybe I'm looking through different means, but I'm just looking at those people being, tell me what's going on in Fairfield County, that why we can't work together, and why we can't share in the economics and the taxpayers' monies of this county. Now, I just want to see that because I see that's going on. If that's the case, maybe it's the mindset, and the superintendent have been begging people to get involved with the bowtie club. There's only one person I know that's been in and out of online, calling his name is Mr. Schaefer. I know he attends, but we can't get anybody else that's not African American to come work with our youth. There are children, they say, everybody's children. What is going on in the county that we don't have more participation and more humanity looking out for our kids and working with one another? If I'm missing something, privately come talk to me, we'll talk. And we'll talk about it.
This is yours, Ms. Jenkins. Have a good evening. Drive carefully.
I'll bet.
Many council members want to respond to that. I'm certainly open for it, and if you think that I sit here and counsel before this public and told a fabricated frid, or I dug up something that's some kind of, that's absolutely not true, I need you to confront me and straighten me out because I'll listen to you and I respect your opinions. And that's all.
I will comment on the recreation. The people in District 2 respond to me and send information about their recreational needs without coming in and speaking on public time. So I do hear their needs and their requests, and so I try to respond to them in a timely fashion whenever I get emails from them. So that's the one thing I can address. I don't know how else we can get in and address, like father matters. I don't know if that's something that some flyers could be put in the magistrate's office or when they go for their bonds, you know, I just don't know. But I think something needs to be done to address those issues because everyone that's involved in that program does need possible help. Not possible, but they need help and make sure that it's available to them because they may not know. I just don't know how you get the word out to people to take advantage of all the programs that are out here. Maybe the black community does a better job than we do. I just don't know what the answer is. But we need to, that's something we can address and see what we can do to get that information out to those who need it.
I appreciate that, Madam Chair. I just thought that was a suggestion, not to stir up any anger. I ask folks for their opinion. If they see it differently, they go to the same court system. I just asked a question. Now, people want to get mad about that and throw up their hands, and what I have noticed, the whites that really participate and get involved, they tell me they're ashamed by all the whites calling them traitors and all this kind of stuff, and you messing with them folks. If that's the attitude where we at in Fairfield County, we're not going anywhere in this county. But that's just my opinion, and I'm not saying this for an argument, but if anyone wants to discuss that with me, I'm open for it to find a solution. I'm not looking for a problem, looking for a solution because these things do exist, and I appreciate. And I only say that about Lake Watery because for 15 years, I just never seen anybody else come in here and complain.
That's because they come to the chair.
No, they've come here.
No, no, I'm talking about those people that you don't see sending me emails.
Okay.
Or they meet with me and express their concerns.
That offends anyone that's on you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Ru.
I'll just say, you probably never been to my hardware store, but I have an old hardware store in Ridgeway. Been there for 100 and some years, since 1840, however long it is. Anyway, I have black and white customers have had since I was this high, and I'm friends with all of them, and I like them everybody the same. It's not, and I've not dealt with any of that kind of in my area, but it's, you know, to me, it's about treating people equally and how you treat them, and I treat everybody the same. And I'm respected by both, and I respect both, and I just hope we can all move in that direction.
I want Mr. Ru to be offended, but I appreciate what you said, and I didn't say that to be having reflection. I've always had a good reputation about it.
I didn't, I didn't.
I just looked at programs.
I didn't take it personally. I'm just saying.
Okay, let's bring that part to a close. Mr. Smith?
I was just gonna, not bringing it to a close, but add to it just a little bit and say that I certainly think that's a broad conversation that Fairfield County needs to have about all of our folks working together. And if you remember back to invocation, I mentioned that hopefully we could do what's in the best interest of all Fairfield County citizens, not just one particular subset. And one thing I also thought about during my campaign for council was that we might do a diversity cultural commission or something along those lines. And Mr. Marscharia, I'd certainly be interested in talking with you about that. Maybe we can spearhead that and get something like that going.
Appreciate you.
Any other comments from council for the good of the county? If not, do I have a motion to go into executive session for legal matter, economic? We're not having one? Okay, good. That's council.